And for the record, I just want to note that Mrs. Blair. During the meeting and she has gone. So that brings us to the next item.
Good afternoon, still me. So we are doing three D three now. So this one is the phase one year three Lake Bank Restoration bidding. My apologies, let me grab something and hand out to you really fast.
Just the same that can't be?
Yes, sir, the same thing we emailed, just a print copy in case you want to look at it.
I reviewed it, hope you were good. I didn't print it.
Okay. Just that you were recommending all of them, that's all it changes. So in the memo, basically what we said was that bids were to be received on the 28th and the 4th. They were, obviously, and we've opened them all. The secondary memo is we've gone through all the bids. So the reason that it's not on the agenda is because the bids were just opened on Tuesday. We went through them Tuesday, yesterday, and today. The summary is this memo that we just handed out to you. So, high level. There are three different bidders. There's a total of 10 bids. Some contracts, like for example, the larger ones, 92 and 124, only receive one bid. Others lakes receive two bids and other lakes receive three bids. So it's kind of a mixed bag. All of the respective low bidders are listed here in the report that we did. Pricing wise, which is what most people are always concerned about, is basically the exact same as last year. So the average last year was 213.70, the average this year is 214.8. So while it did not go down, I think a very important point to make with this is that pretty much everywhere and every industry across Florida and especially Southwest Florida, prices have been going up considerably. So I think for them to stay the same, it would be really honest to do the win.
Tyler, you come up with a number of monies that we're short that we go back. There is no issue as far as we know it at this point in time of getting the additional funds from SRF to cover the difference? What do we have available? We have what left available, 1.5 million, something like that?
So I think we summarize it in here. This is year two of the SRF agreement that was originally for, I don't remember the original amount, it's like three and a half million dollars. What's left is 1.55, 1, 1,555,438 in construction funds. And then you also had a contingency of $250,000. And then separately, there is an allowance in that DEP loan for technical services of 138,000 dollars.
Including inspection.
That covers inspection and all of that. So you do not have enough currently to award all of these lakes in that loan. If you do choose to award all of these lakes, you would have to do, I'm not sure if amendment or modification is the right word, but you would have to increase that amount with the state. Now, we have talked to the people at the SRF program and we have told them that, you know, hey, we've done our cost of bidding, it came back as, you know, the penny of cost was more than we have remaining before we even bid them. We've received the bids, we've confirmed that they are in fact more than what we have remaining. They sounded very optimistic that if we were to go to amend that agreement, that, you know, there's good possibility the funds are be available. There's no guarantee of that, but it's a highly probable, I guess.
What is the amount that by adding non-construction and the construction costs of going with all six? What is that total versus the 1,700,000?
2,666,000.
2,600,000 is what we need extra?
Yeah, so let's just say it's 2, 2.66353.97, so 2627.
The total of all the low bids is what?
The total of all the bids is, I think you wrote it here somewhere. That's what I just said, 2,666,353.97.
Okay, so it's 266 and we got 1.7, we need about a million bucks.
If you don't use the contingency, yes. If you want to save the contingency, yes, you would have to add a million. If you want to use the contingency, then, you know.
Say, save the contingency, you need about a million bucks.
Yes, if you were choosing to work. Now, I do want to say, you know, it's up to the board what action, if any, you want to take tonight. You know, if you, obviously, you've just got these bids today. If you do want to go through them and, you know, take a look at what you want to do and award in January, it's entirely up to you. You want to award today, our turn, but that's basically what we have for you.
We're in the season right now to lose the time.
Say again?
We're in the season right now to be doing this work and it will be beneficial to get out there as quick as possible. So I'd make the motion to go immediately to SRF to ask for the additional million dollars. The money, as far as the residents, the big point, thing to point out is we are already collecting the revenue to pay the principal and interest on this, as long as we don't exceed, as I recall, eight million bucks. Is that correct, Steve?
He's correct.
Yeah.
So this, this is not.
Doesn't impact assessment.
It's no impact, this does not impact assessments. I say proceed full speed with going to SRF to get their approval to go with all six projects. On the proviso that you're sure that we can get asked and declare as minor items, those missing items that the bidders on page three didn't supply, two insurance certificates and a business that they've formed, whatever that is.
Yeah, let me follow up on that. We actually, I think Chris reached out to the bidders and he actually did get those already. So they're already in hand.
Already in hand, right, okay.
Yeah, and what I was going to say is that to the extent that there are still some minor items that were not provided, that the board would individually under each bid waive those irregularities formally before.
Sounds like we got it.
Yeah. So for the record, that part of the memorandum needs to be revised?
Yeah, they were received today, those items. So we can revise the memo or however we'd like to move forward, but those items have been received.
But the next step would be to make a motion to approve these bidders as you have them identified as being the low responsive responsible bidders that, that's on your other phrase that you throw in on.
Yeah.
The best meets our.
I think the last, I think I was suggesting one contract at a time, is that how they were submitted? Is that correct?
As soon as they, as soon as they take a breath, I want to get in there.
Mr. Guy?
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, as I've looked through the bids, I've noticed that Metro Equipment Services is the high bid everywhere that it had competition. And the only bids that you are going to supposedly award to them are about a million 900,000 dollars worth of work where they have no competition. I find that totally outrageous and could not possibly bid for both for contract three on Lake 92 or contract six on Lake 124.
Bill, I understand what you're saying, but you got a problem and it's called access.
It's what?
It's called access. These other bidders simply do not have capability to put barges in the water. That's your problem.
That's not the problem at all. The problem is we haven't, we don't have any competition here and when, when they did have competition, they were so far out of line of, it isn't even funny.
On those two ponds that they were, that are the low bidder on, where there weren't any other bids?
The only bid.
They, the other bidders do not have the ability to access those like Metro does with the barges. That's, that's the problem and it's not going to change. We haven't got a way to solve that.
It's our job to find somebody else that will at least give us a bid on it. This is, this is a huge amount of money.
We, we, we tried it, they, nobody bid it.
Have we, we use Metro?
Yeah, Metro did several.
On the barge, you know, and I think we've had some similar conversations around access and the capability that Metro has that others don't. But I do agree with Bill.
You've got to do the work off of both, that's the problem.
Yeah, I do agree with Bill that I have a hard time approving or awarding a contract when, when there's no other bids and especially to Bill's point that the, the two that we're giving them are substantial. So I just.
Well, keep in mind, those are the large lakes.
Yeah.
That's, that's the difference.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if I can, I, I agree with you. If I can at least explain, in our opinion, why we think that might be, is that their pricing, Metro Equipment Services pricing I'm talking about now, is high on small lakes in part because their mobilization cost is crazy high compared to the others because of the, the method of how they want to repair it. So they want to go stick barges in the lakes and go repair it from that way. Which on the big lakes, I think, is a great idea and makes a lot of sense. On the small lakes, to be honest, I think it's really stupid. But that's the way they bid. But on the larger lakes, I think they're more competitive and if you look at their unit prices, they're really not bad unit price wise on the large lakes because they're breaking that up over the period of lake. So I agree with you completely, they're the only bid and if Gateway wants to award to them, that's entirely up to you guys, but that's most likely the reason why. And I guess to Ed's point, there's a lot of headache with these smaller vendors going to do that larger lake for a lot of reasons. It ties up a lot of bonding capacity, which some people have, don't have, quite frankly. I mean, $2,000 bonding capacity is a lot for small time contractors. So there's not a whole lot of people in this business that can do it. And then on top of that, just the, the way to get to the lake is hard in a lot of these cases. So I don't know if that helps or hurts things, but that's at least an explanation of probably how we got here.
Price is competitive, but in fact, it's lower than the cost of the other ones. So that's, that's what you need to be looking at, not the total.
Wait, wait, wait.
Go to the last page.
Would you go through that again, please?
Go to the last page, bid analysis. If you look at pond 92 and pond 124, the unit prices are 187, which is the lowest of anything, and 217, which is a little bit less than the average. So the cost per foot, which is what it's all based on, it just so happens that these two are large ponds. That's why the, the price is so high. The issue is putting it out for bid, bid or rebid to try to get somebody to do that. We tried it and it didn't succeed. Are we telling the people on those bonds, they're not going to do anything?
That's what I tell them, we're not going to do anything right now.
We're not following what we have agreed to and our agreement was set for water management?
Oh, baloney.
You could, I'll follow the law.
Oh, baloney, yeah.
That's interesting, you and Bill, and I, I like to follow the law. I like to do stuff right.
So 92 is, it, when you talk about the difference, you're saying that's almost 12% under?
We're under the original business.
On a, on a linear foot, linear foot.
It's 12% below the, the linear foot average?
Of last year, yes, sir.
Of last year, okay.
And last year, they're, they're dollar apart, they're the same. They're 12% below average, yes.
And like, you know, 121, that's 16, almost 17% above.
Right, right, and the reason for that is that's by far and smallest lake. So, I mean, you know, there's a little bit of common skill there.
Yeah, I understand.
Tyler, I have a question, depending upon how the board wants to proceed. Just a number of items for discussion. The current loan agreement we have with DEP includes all six of these lakes, is that correct?
They were in the facility.
They are covered under the facilities plan, yes.
We have, you know, the fact that we have, the discussion with regards to how much money is available, that's under our current loan agreement, right? Were these six lakes outlined as the project in the last loan agreement that was signed?
Yes.
So, so that if we were to exclude a lake, just for sake of discussion, the board was to decide that they would award five contracts, continue discussion on one contract, subject to getting approved from FDEP for the additional funding. But that poses a problem, I mean.
I have no idea. I mean, we can ask them, I don't know. I imagine they would. I'm going to go ahead and guess because last year, for example, originally there was eight in this package. Two were awarded under that same agreement. So I don't see why, if we this time bid six and only award five, I don't see how it changes things, but I mean.
Well, the problem was, we had the money to do it all and they took some of the money back, as I understand. That's, that's why we're having to go back to them.
It's a long explanation, that's the simple version of it, yes.
So the, the issue is that these bonds were included in the facility plan. They were identified as the ones that had the most serious problem. My thing is, go with it.
Well, I guess the question, and I'm concerned about reward bids and contracts, and we don't have the funding for it.
Well, it's alternative to funding. I mean, we do that all the time.
Well, I mean, you have funding in place for.
Five.
Five, essentially. You don't currently for the last one, if you would choose to award that. Now, you know, legally about, can you award without the funding actually being in place? I don't know.
It's a tentative award contract.
Tony's question.
Do it all the time.
That's one way, contingent subject to obtaining an amendment to the funding.
Correct.
With FDEP.
Timeline wise, I will tell you, that, that's probably got to go to public hearing, right? To amend that contract?
I don't know.
But I will tell you, that might have to go to the public hearing to amend that, to get more money, which would be in February.
I don't think it does.
You don't think so?
I don't think so. Because it's already in the facilities plan, it's just a loan amendment.
That's true. 124 is way worse.
124 is way worse.
It's not even close.
And Tyler, based on kind of what you've said, the, the cost of not doing it now, looking at traditional increases, it's not going to get any cheaper.
I mean, we've been doing this for, you know, five years now. Over the last three years, it actually went down last year and then it went up a dollar this year, which is, I think, a result of basically just doing it earlier in the year and getting more bidders. But I, I mean, it's not going to go down next year, I don't expect. I mean, unless you hit some economic crash like we had, you know, several years back.
Madam Chairman, if we're going to bid on these, or vote on these now, I'd like to have them bid separately, or voted on separately.
I think that's appropriate.
Tyler, do we have a comment?
I'm sorry?
That these bids weren't in the bid packet, there was no public notice or comment.
It wasn't listed as an agenda item?
Included in the board packet. It just came out today, so is it appropriate?
Well, I guess, was it listed, it wasn't listed as an agenda item? What we can do is ask.
That listed as discussion item, yes, it was on there.
And I don't think we have to middle list it.
We're losing time. This is the time of the year you want to be doing this work. It's 30 days, it can really come and pay off.
Yeah, it's just this phase one year three Lake Bank Restoration bidding. It's in there, one of the materials. So if anybody wants to sign up to speak now that we have the recommendation of award.
So, something else that I could just throw in here, if you so choose, each of these three contractors happened to win two lakes each. You know, if there's funding issues or whatever to work out, I mean, you could award one.
Say that again.
Each of these three bidders won two lakes each, or were the apparent bidder on two lakes each.
That's correct.
You know, if you had, if you wanted to go back and review or whatever you wanted to do, I mean, a potential option is you could have worked some today and not all.
And maybe that, I mean, honestly, the, the question I think that we have is that the two single bids for Metro are the biggest, probably the most complex. Is it to our advantage to basically approve all the others?
Sure.
Totally disagree. Look, look at your price. They're only big because they have the biggest shoreline.
No, I mean, I'm saying just, maybe I'm not understanding the, the funding piece.
But what was?
There would just be a contingent on.
That's right. What, what my motion would be, would be to approve all six of what appears to be and recommended to be the low responsive responsible bids that are best for us, subject to getting the answer back from DEP on the availability of the needed approximately 1 million dollars to fund the loan. If they come back and tell us we can't, then we're back to the deal of one of these, probably Lake 92, because it's as close to a million as we're going to get, goes to the wayside. My conversations were that with them earlier was that they didn't think that that was going to be an issue.
No, I agree, yeah, I mean, we had the same conversation. It didn't sound like it was an issue, but, you know, actually it's not yet.
But the only way to do it, to find out, is to run it up the line and see what happens.
And these are all based on the revised.
Revised plan.
The revised plan. So we've, we've trimmed as much as we can probably trim off these, based on, within our quality criteria.
Yeah, I mean, unless you want to go to a totally different approach, this is.
This is ridiculous.
And I looked at the, the issue with Lake 92 and 124 is the, is the fact that you, the only way you can do these, you can't do them from the shoreline. You have to go into the, into the lake with the barge and do them.
Can you remind me where they're in? 92 is where?
92 is Pinewood Lakes.
Pinewood Lakes.
And the other one is in Gateway Greens and Mahogany.
124 is the.
124 is the.
Yeah, for Gateway Greens. And it, it does have some serious erosion issues. Well, I'd make the motion to proceed with all six tentative awarded contract as shown and on the basis that they are the low responsive responsible bid, that best.
Most advantageous to the district.
Most advantageous to the district, subject to financing as determined by DEP.
Can I make one small recommendation to that?
Yeah.
Do you want to go ahead and do the five for shore and then the last one be the tentative one?
I think the, the board, that's why I suggest the.
You can do it.
Just the guy indicated to do each contract separately, I think is a better approach. And I guess, Chris, did you have a concern that FDP would be concerned about having the memorandum provided at the board meeting and not being available earlier?
Well, wait a minute, wait, hold it. If you could have did it this way, then our DEP is going to come back and say, you don't need the million dollars. We need a document to go to them to show them that we need the million dollars to do all the work. So we've got to approve them all. Going any other way will work.
Tyler, or Danny, maybe.
You could approve them at the meeting, but you still have to enter into the contract and approve the contracts in January, at the next meeting in January. And in the meantime, we send the.
Paperwork going forward.
Paperwork to DEP and ask them to amend our agreement, which I agree with you, Mr. Tinkle, they'll probably look at it and say, yeah, we can increase your loan.
I, I think that's the proper way to do it.
And will that allow us to basically start working what we can find?
Well, it, it moves us 30, it moves us 30 days closer to being able to start the construction. If we wait, we're going to lose another 30 days.
If you approve the contracts January 3rd, we could issue a notice received within a week to 10 days.
Well.
The contractors got to buy the insurance policies, they got to get bonds in place, they got to execute a contract. I mean, there's, there's a solid.
I guess my point is, you know, you know, how long, is there any reason, if we've got three contractors, six, is that right? Six, with two each?
Two each.
Two each? To basically move forward with what we can find? And basically it's Metro.
But then you don't get an answer on the other. Because DEP is going to say, you don't need any more money, because you haven't asked for it.
No, no, I'm saying, we, we would ask for that money, but we have, we, we've got.
We've got to make, we've got to make a motion, though, to accept it first, for them to do it. Otherwise, they're going to say, what is this, this is a paper chase for us. In other words, ball's on our part.
I'm just trying to see, what can we do to already get the ball rolling on the ones that we can roll the ball on?
Only way we can do it is to approve contingent upon getting the funding. They come back and say, you're go, then we're go. If they come back and say, we don't have the million bucks, then we're back to either Lake 92 or Lake 124 is on the cut line. It's the only way I see you doing it.
Mr. Guy, comment?
I made my comment. I think the attorney agreed with me that we ought to vote on the except.
Yes, sir. And I guess Danny or Tyler, your interaction with FDP, would they look at the request for amendment differently if it was non-mast capable of six or individual approval or review of each contract?
Probably not. If you received the bids, probably not.
And I guess, Chris, back to your comment, you suggested the public may not have had an opportunity to speak on this. Again, it's an agenda item, but the memorandum wasn't available today. Do you have a concern that DEP would look askant at that or not?
No, I don't think it was a formal agenda, it was just the amounts weren't in there, so.
So you think they would have a concern or not?
I could not answer that question. I think if it's, if something's approved by the board, they would put more weight on that.
This is why Lake 92 has to be done by barge. There is no place to, to work from.
Same thing with 124.
So let me make one, one final statement, and it's more direct towards Bill. Only because I think we were both on the same page when we were looking at it. And those, those three lakes, 92, 119, and 124 really stood out, especially the two that was awarded to Metro because they were the high bidders. But going back and looking at it, if you look at the linear foot, the difference there, the linear foot cost is well within, actually, it's even, it's below average on 192, just under 2% above on 124 and 1.2. So I think it's within acceptable thresholds of what is cost effective. The dollar amount is large, but I think when we look at it, it's cost effective. It's, I think it's a responsible bid for, for that lake. I don't think we're going to get any cheaper at any point in time. And if we are still pushing forward with addressing these lakes, I almost feel like, you know, we, we need to approve these, whether we do it individually or all together. I almost feel like we have to be in the mindset of approving them all or.
I think doing them all together so that it can be presented as one package to the DEP sounds like the best way to go. I just don't know if there is a concern about if these prices not actually being on the street.
And I think, my point was, I don't care how we approve, individually, altogether. But Bill and I originally concerned was high bid, it didn't seem responsible. But as I look at it from a linear footage, it, the numbers hold up. It's, it's a, it's a good unit price.
We've been talking about unit prices all day long, but the bottom line is, we're talking about two contracts, a total of 1,900,000 dollars awarded without any competition. That just gives me all kinds of indigestion.
Although, Mr. Guy, I understand your concern, but it was publicly advertised, publicly noticed. And how many people showed up at the pre-bid meeting?
Five or six. Five or six bidders, and three actually submitted bids.
So from legal perspective, I understand what you're saying, but from legal perspective, those issues, I think, they're taken care of.
And I think there's a reason for that, right? Tyler, these are challenging, the solution is not easy.
Manager's wrong, I'm just saying, that's an awful lot of money to go award without any.
The problem is finding someone that's competition for Metro.
That's what we need to do.
I don't know how we do that.
That's what our managers get paid the big bucks to do.
I'll, I'll go back and again say, make the motion that we award the contracting. I, I don't see it's going down those lines one by one is going to accomplish anything.
You know, I think what the motion would be to accept, accept the recommendation of the district engineer and the memorandum dated December 6, 2018, and award the contract with greatest potential award, contingent upon obtaining approval from DEP of additional funding to fund the entire project.
That's, that's the motion.
And I'll segue for, for discussion. One question for Chris. What is, what staff's recommendation?
We would have had more bids on the second round, but one bidder was late turning them in, but not including those big, big lakes. I'll have to share that my concern, like Mr. Guy, when you're awarding something close to a million dollars with a single bidder, we know we've had that situation before. And some of those large companies that take that type of barge related work are out doing five and 10 miles of canals for the water management districts. They typically won't come into a community like ours to do that kind of work. The only option would be to move ahead with the, with the four lakes and the big ones, put them out to bid and look for, for other contractors, beat the bushes. We may or may not get them, but you're going to push that into the next dry season.
Keep in mind, you've got the two of your lowest unit prices. I'd hate to come back here and have 1.8, 1.9 million, do 2.1.
I mean, Chris, and the unit prices are solid.
The unit prices are solid, that's exactly right.
So I'm going to, I'm going to push you to, to be a little more definitive in your answer. It makes perfect sense, you can move forward with four because that's, you know, there, there's competition there, they're good, they're good prices. The, the two that, that are the highest that did not have other bids, I mean, do you? The two that are the highest, that did not have other bids, I mean, do you, in your professional opinion, and as the district manager, do you feel like this is a responsible, that it would be responsible for the board to accept that, even with one singular bid? Or do you feel, based on, I mean, you've had interaction with these vendors, do you feel like we could get someone at the table that would bid, or if we, you know, sent out for bid again, would we still have one bidder that has barge, because it's difficult, it's complicated? You know, I understand the issue, why it's sensitive, but just pushing it off or not doing it in hopes that, you know, the pond fairy is going to come around and bid at a lower price a year from now or two years, I, you know, that's not responsible either. So I want you to just take a stance and give us your recommendation on what you think we should do.
No, my recommendation, because I'm confident with the unit price and the contractor, they've been here in the fore and do it, like I said, I just have heartburn, same thing, you know, in the big picture, being a bureaucrat.
Yeah.
Taking a single bid, but the linear foot costs are not out of line with even the smaller ponds, so as far as the value, the value's there.
The value's there. So there is a risk of not doing it now? Is there, there may not be a solution in the future, or maybe more expensive? Is that kind of what you're hearing?
And I would submit the same thing to those with the DEP, I think they'll be favorable in releasing the loan amount with it, but again, the way we have this worded, you can always pull out of it, or approve those contracts in January.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Did we get a second?
Yeah, I second. First question.
Now, last year, we did not bid out 92 and 124.
That's correct. Pushed them last year.
Right. Pushed them to this year.
Right. Last year, we did a total of six, 92 and 124, we're not in that group.
Because I did, I went back and I looked at the bids that we had received on the six that we bid out last year, and if it makes you feel any better, the bids are, one of them is even like a hundred thousand dollars less, and that's like 61 than what the lowest bid was last time. The other bids are a little bit higher, but they're not a huge amount higher, but, so as far as the four that we didn't do last year, that we did again this year, which is the smaller of the six, I'm comfortable, perfectly comfortable with those bids. But the other one for 92 and 124, I don't, I don't know of another company that could compete with Metro. Do you, Chris? Is there somebody that could come in to do the same kind of work that Metro does with the barge and?
We had no interest from any other large contractors on this. It was advertised as a brand star in the paper.
So even if we pulled those and tried turning around and rebidding them, I don't think we get, I don't think we get any of them.
I mean, I can add to that if you like, the two contractors that I know of that also do similar work, were at the pre-bid, came here disgusted, neither one of them submitted a bid, so either they're busy, or were interested, or didn't think they'd be competitive, or whatever. I mean, those are the three that I know of, and only one's a bid won, so.
My concern is at this point, Tyler, is Metro's played their card. I don't think I want to take the chance of them coming back on a rebid, be at the second bidder, and say, you know, I was 1.9, I didn't have any competition, I'm 2.2 next time. I don't think it's in our best interest not to take and go ahead with the six as we've gotten.
I'm good.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to proceed with all six of these lakes? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I'm an aye, so that's three to one.
Yeah, the motion is proceed, contingent upon.
Contingent upon.
Pardon.
Otherwise, we may have to come back and remove one of these lakes. All right.
Lakes.
Hey, we just got started. This is a, this is a many-year project.
Just want to get these first batch quickly.
And speaking of lakes.
Proceed with facility plan now.
Yeah. Speaking of the next set of lakes.
So still me, still, still talking about lakes. This is the facilities plan for phase two lakes. So the lakes that we just awarded would complete, or whatever potentially worth, would complete all of the phase one lakes. Now we're into phase two facility plan. So this document was required to be submitted to DEP to apply for funding for the next, is it 16? I think it's 16.
Fifteen.
Fifteen? Fifteen lakes. Now, this item today is not intended for any action to take place. It does have to be advertised 30 days before action can be taken on it. So this today is just FYI, for your information, if you have any questions on it, we can definitely go through those. If you would like to see any changes, we can definitely do that. But this is just an informational item for today, so.
I want to clarify.
Oh, sorry.
We may want to send it to.
Some questions.
DEP to have and start reviewing it.
Okay.
So I would think.
So we're sending it to DEP as a draft?
As a draft.
As a draft. But they're not going to accept it, right?
Right, we're not asking for acceptance, but we do want buy-in, and it's okay to send the draft.
Because there's a couple of comments I've got in here that I think need to be clarified.
Okay, sure. So just really quick, sorry. There are differences between this facilities plan and the last facilities plan. The major differences are that this includes three components. This is lakebank restoration, aeration, and laterals. Previously, it was just lakebank restoration.
But we're not stipulating at this time to DEP how we're doing those, because as I understand it, we could possibly end up with three separate sets of bids, the lakebank, the aeration, and the laterals, because each of those are different vendors.
Yeah, in order in which they're bid. As long as they're all part of the project.
But we want to have them included in the facility plan so that we can get SRF money to finance them.
Yes.
Okay.
And explain to me, I believe I know what a fountain is, but a diffuser, is that?
Like all the lakes in Pelican Reserve have, the bubblers.
Yeah, they're just. Aeration.
I know your lake, aeration. I know your lake, aeration.
Yeah, and I guess, so, the way you have to do facilities plans is, you basically have to present options, and then you have to say which option you selected. So with lake aeration, not that many options. I mean, you can put it in a fountain, you can put it in a diffuser, or you can do nothing, which is the three options that we listed. If your goal is aeration and not aesthetics, it's really not an option. Diffusers are the way to go.
My only question during reviewing this was, is this the, for the aeration, the 5,500, which I understand is pretty average price, but does that include the FPL giving the power to the locations to energize the aerators?
Kind of.
That's the most defensive part.
That's a good question. Where those dollars came from, the most relevant projects that we could find were obviously the ones in Pelican.
Pelican.
So we used the total bid cost for the jobs in Pelican, including the electrical. Now, obviously, the electrical situation in Pelican is not identical to every single one of these lakes, it's just an average.
It's probably due.
Yeah, it includes that average electric. Now, it does not include things like if FPNL had to come back and rebuild service, like put in a new transformer, I have no idea if they would have to in some of these areas or not, until we actually go look at it and design it. So it does not include that.
When do we do that to know what that impact is, because it is substantial?
Design phase. I mean, we're not going to know until we look at it.
And then the other one, Tyler, is on page 19, under public participation, on May 19, 2016, is that, is there a typo in there? Or is that a, that whole paragraph I didn't understand? We haven't advertised yet.
Correct. It's, basically, it's just a placeholder right now.
Okay.
It, once we actually do officially advertise and get the dollars, that'll get in there. But I don't have a date yet, so we just.
Okay, and then all the blank pages, that looks like that they're exhibits possibly? Appendixs? What, is there something to go in there by furnished by somebody else, or what?
Some of them, yes. Like appendix A, that's in there, that's the nature wildlife list, so you go to the next page.
Okay, AMV are there.
AMV are there. Go to the next one. C, summary of the hearing.
Okay, that stands for, that goes.
We have that there. Yeah, there shouldn't be that many blank pages after that, follow this for that. Capital financing plan, that's something that Stephen Bloom is working on now.
Okay.
So once that's done, that would.
So these are, these are fillings.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I'd say, well, it answers my question.
And there's, you don't solar power those things there, this is just more expensive.
You can.
You can, you can. I, I don't know what the pros and cons, did you guys solar power any of yours over there? No.
Did you look into it?
I can't tell you that whether we got it or not. Bob would know, but.
We looked into it for one simple cul-de-sac for the irrigation.
Yeah.
To run a simple irrigation, and it was a disaster. It was a disaster.
Still no.
Yeah. I think it's something to look at, but I think he hit the nail on the head. I know where I live, if you were trying to put the ponds in, FPL has designed the transformer so tight that we had one vacant lot, and when they went to build, they had to put in a new transformer. You would have thought that they would have had enough juice to serve if you have seven houses on a transformer and one was vacant for 20 years, that when that house built, you just connected on it. They had to change the transformer.
Yeah, I mean, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I was just going to ask, so we don't need to do anything more with this memo? This was informational, but you're going to be sending this to the DEP as a draft for them to start reviewing?
Do we have a motion to do that?
Correct. As long as you're, I guess, general consensus or motion, whatever you want to do, our plan is to send this to the DEP for review, and then after the advertisement goes out, is it the first meeting, second meeting? I think second meeting in January, you would officially take action and adopt this.
And call for a public hearing.
No, it wouldn't be a hearing. January 17th is when you would, your place notice to advertise to hear and adopt it on January 17th.
Right, yes. Yeah, not a separate one, that is it.
So the public hearing would be on the 17th?
Yes, sir.
And this is the next phase, this is for next year.
Phase two.
This is. Phase two.
2020.
Yeah.
Which are the last couple of years. The phase two are the less stringent, and that advertisement is done, it's, I think Chris probably already sent it in by now, but for the public, for the public hearing and on the facilities plan. So, yeah, that's, that part's, that part's done, so it will be settled.
Excess of $80, $80, I don't think you're going to get all that work done in one year.
Right.
So you're probably going to do multi-year reviews, like we did the last time.
Right.
Yeah, facilities plan is a formality.
Yeah.
Gets you on the priority list, and it allows you, you have a five-year window to complete work within that, or you have got to review that facility.
Okay. So.
I think there ought to be a motion authorizing them to submit it for the draft review, just for the record.
No, you can't.
Can't.
Make your motion.
Make a motion to, for Tetra Tech to submit the phase two facility plan to DEP in a draft form for their review and comment.
Second.
Okay. The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
You know any opposed? You're still up.
I'm still up. I think I'm down to the last one, though, which is status of district engineering task authorizations. We included the update, we discussed most of all of them today, but if you have any questions on other ones, we happily answer them for you.
Mr. Guy?
Hello.
Mr. Bank?
We've talked about the AutoCAD a couple times, I know that there is essential work for you guys to do, we just going to re-scope that? Because it still says there are no services required.
That's, I mean, that's up to Gateway. Their.
Let's either scratch it, or let's revise it and put it either in process, not started, or?
I'd say scratch it. When that was developed, it was developed for, to accompany the GIS, and I don't, I mean, Gateway hasn't done anything with the GIS, in fact, since, you know, Dave Place passed away, you don't have a person, a place to, yeah.
What happened?
He passed away in August.
Yeah. So you don't, so it was to accompany that to, basically what it was, is to take where you didn't have.
No, I know what it is.
So, yeah, so, I mean, I would say just.
And I know that we have interest in building out a GIS, and we were going to, we were going to multipurpose that task authorization, but I think we just.
I would.
Let's scratch it, and then we'll start with the new one, because we need to scope it out more clearly, and so we understand.
I agree.
GIS, I agree, yeah.
Anything? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll add just one more thing if I can, just because Phil and Tony are both in the same room. With the striping.
Yes.
Operation, basically, Tony, are on the same page as the, no, they can't make us do that, so.
They can't make us do that.
It's our opinion, so. That's what we're going to.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is not a, okay. So did you, did you get any response from the city?
Not yet. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Have a Merry Christmas.
You all as well.
We'll see you next year.
It felt like you were in a hurry to get out of here.
We have a organization function to go to, an engineering organization function.
Drive safe.
Where is it?
Where is it? We'll be there, we'll be right there.
Can I, I know I don't have a specific.
I want to have some.
I know a few things I could report to the board or ask for some authorization. I, unfortunately, I did not make the formal agenda, but there are a couple items I'd like to bring up to the board. One is, I set the memo up, I think, November 29th, about the conveyance of the FPL easement lands, and we can ask any members of the public if they wanted to get to and speak on it, but all we're doing right now is wrapping up on the, or we can defer to the next board, is just wrapping up the affidavit and, you know, the little nets like that. Form of deed is fine, so we use the board authorization to accept the conveyance, subject to a final form of affidavit, I'm comfortable with, and we can work on that between now and the next meeting.
Does this interfere with the work of Stony Brook?
No, it actually enhances it.
Well, that's what I thought. So the quicker we get this through, it makes that a lot easier.
Yes, we won't need an easement if we.
That's what I was getting at.
Correct.
So what do you want, must make sure that that expedition happens?
Oh, just requested, except the conveyance, the, you know, easement lands, we have a